To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this Tuesday evening, the chance to meet together as a council and as residents in this city and his staff as well. We're grateful for the spirit of volunteerism in our city and for the great men and women who give so much of their time and of themselves to help move our city forward in productive directions. We pray that thy Spirit may be with us here as we meet tonight. We express our appreciation for the spirit of scouting and the spirit of volunteerism here in Pleasant Grove. We express our appreciation for the blessings of this season and pray that as we turn our hearts and thoughts to thee that we'll also reach out to one another in friendship and in a spirit of civility and kindness in our city. We express our appreciation for all that we're blessed with and pray that we'll be sensitive to the needs of those who have not been as richly blessed and that we'll be mindful of the less fortunate and those around us. And we pray for these blessings and ask for thy guidance and direction as we meet tonight and do so in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to request an insertion. In the presentation section, I'd like to give a presentation to Deion Giles. I don't think you gave him enough presentations and so I have one I'd like to give him.
Okay.
So if we could do that, maybe as like item eight, A and a half.
Okay. And then note, item nine C has been canceled.
That's correct.
Any other changes?
No other changes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make the motion approved. Tonight's meeting agenda with said changes for Ben.
Second.
Motion by Eric, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We'll have an open session now. If there's an item that's not on the agenda as a public hearing or you have something else you want to discuss, please step up to the microphone and you just have to state your name.
My name is Mark Ryan. I just wanted to give this to you. I was asked last week, or two weeks ago, if I should leave these and I said no, but I do want to leave these. These are some of the papers that were signed by some of the local business people. Again, I'd like to ask you to please consider to stop your plans to build this building, new City Hall in this block. My goal and what I hope is, is that you'll get back to the community for approving your bond. Give them a full block City Park. That's what I would like. Save those two buildings that I'm so much fighting for. Get rid of this building, get rid of the fire department when the new buildings are built and give the residents a full block City Park downtown. There's other places you can move your building to and many of the residents do not know what your plans are, even though you've notified people and almost everybody I talked to is not aware that you plan on bulldozing down this old high school, this whole wrecked building and the seminary building, the first LDS seminary building. And I think you're doing the community wrong. I know you think that this building needs to be here, but truly you can move it elsewhere and there are other locations you could move it to. Every two weeks I'm going to be coming in with another 50 to 100. I'm just going to start to go door to door now to the residences and I'm going to bring them in and you're going to see how few people actually know what your intentions are. I just want you to know that. I don't think you're doing the community right. That's what I think. I think you should move the building elsewhere. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Ryan, sorry, when you, when you take the petition to the residents, can you make sure that you tell them that it will cost two to three million to save the wreck center?
I'm going in totally unbiased. I've got two questions only. One is, are you aware that city plans on taking them down and do you want these buildings down? That's the only thing I'm talking about. There's no, you know my agenda for a long time. I want a full block City Park for the residents, for Pleasant Grove. And so I'm going in with no point of view from myself whatsoever. As she can see there, there's only two questions. And it's as simple as, do you know it's going to hap, these buildings are going to be bulldozed down and do you want it to happen? That's the only approach I'm doing with, with the people I'm talking to. And so I understand that it's going to take some money to fix up this building.
Two to three million.
Well, that's the estimate you have, but you also had estimates to build these buildings for, in the city of just below $20 million. Now you're at nine and a half million. Maybe your estimates are wrong.
No, that was from a professional firm.
I understand, but you had professionals saying it was going to cost just short of $20 million for these buildings. Now you're under $10 million. So maybe you should try to put it out to the, the local people to see what they would actually charge to redo this, not from some firm that gives you an estimate of what it should cost. I understand it's going to cost some money, but it is a benefit to the community. People use it every month and they love these buildings. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
It's Mark Bezzant from here in beautiful Pleasant Grove, the strawberry city. Just wanted to, one, say thank you to those that were involved with the veterans memorial service this last month. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. I compliment our fire chief for his remarks there. It was just excellent and of course, your remarks, Mayor, as it concluded that. It's lovely to have such a lovely memorial here in Pleasant Grove to hold those at, but I'm glad that we're doing things like that. Second thing I wanted to speak to is with the passing of these bonds, I just want to be one voice to say, I really want to encourage really good quality in this and also planning for the future. That if, to really make sure that we are doing things with an eye to the future. And so if we have to do things to where we can add on to the buildings in the future, if it's necessary, we really consider that, but we really do quality. I've spoken to this issue before, having worked at UVU where at one time they just kind of patched things together and then made a conscious decision that we're going to go first class. So I go about different cities. Doug on it, I, I just think that there's no reason Pleasant Grove needs to be taking a second class position to anybody. I think we've got as fine a people here and we ought to have as fine a facilities as anyplace else. The second thing I wanted to mention is in regards to this history. This month I'll be put in as the president of the Sons of the Utah Pioneers. This last fall, we redid the markers for the four corners of the fort wall. You'll notice that the fort is not here anymore. That was originally built by the Pioneer residents. A number of historic things are not here. My concern is if we're going to have historic things, we need to invest the two to $3 million or whatever it takes. When I see the beautiful work that was done at the Salt Lake County Building, they had to spend serious money to get it there. But just to hang on to old buildings and not properly really restore them, I think is a disservice to the community. And so I had referenced with Councilman Jensen, the beautiful historical work that they'd done over at American Fork High School to honor their history. All those buildings aren't all up, but they've done a marvelous work in that high school to honor their history. And I think some wonderful things can be done that way. And we've got about as deep a roots as anybody in Pleasant Grove and sometimes we need to move forward with things and not just hang on to stuff and not really properly maintain it. And so those are my comments because it's just a wonderful place to live. And I just want to be a voice to say, let's move forward in a positive way. Let's work together to find good, positive solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else for the open session?
Molly Andrew, 1125 Sage Drive. I just want to echo Brother Bezzant's comments and I really appreciate the comments that he made and I do think it's time to move on. And we met for a lot, a lot of months and it was open to the public. And I think if Mr. Ryan had that big of a concern, I really wish that he would have attended our meetings and voiced those concerns in because they were talked about and the public did have the floor at times during those meetings and that would have been terrific input. I just have a couple of questions. I want to know why the owner's rep is being pushed so hard right now before we get an RFP going for an architect. Why isn't the ball rolling on getting the building going instead of having someone who represents us?
I think last week we actually discussed that and staff has gone ahead and pulled together examples of RFPs from other cities.
So it's in process?
Yes. Getting an owner's rep on board from Pleasant Grove City, someone from the community who has experience in this entire process would benefit in guiding the council as to how to proceed on these matters.
Will they have input on selecting an architect?
Will who?
The owner's rep.
Yeah, I would expect the owner's rep to be part of that process.
Okay. And then another thing I want to just have some questions on is why are we putting such an emphasis on the dollar amount for the bond when the city citizens agreed on the 9.5 when we don't even have a cost yet for the building?
So I know that there's a lot of discussion going on on Facebook, but in this meeting, I don't think that we're spending a lot of time discussing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Blaine Thatcher. I have some questions. Again, I'd like to know what efforts are being made to reduce the cost of the Public Safety Building. The committee and the council all, I think, acknowledged that there are a lot of things that could be done to reduce the, the $11 million budget. And so I'd, I'd like to know what's being done and what efforts we're, we're putting forward in, in that regard. Also would like to know what we're going to do before we issue bonds in working to reduce those costs. Seems, again, a little premature to jump to issuing bonds before we know how much we actually are going to have to bond. And we have funds available that we could proceed on architectural work and other things. We also are talking about some numbers to justify going ahead and bonding fully for $9.5 million now when it's highly possible that we don't need to borrow $9.5 million. And a little bit of math would show that, you know, that could be a huge interest difference over the life of the loan if we borrow 9.5 and don't really need to borrow 9.5. So it seems to me prudence would suggest that we should put forth all of our efforts to determine how much we could reduce that, that cost before, of course, we go ahead and bond. Would like to know what efforts we're putting forward in that before we, you know, I've not heard any discussion about that, but I have heard discussion about, you know, we've got to go ahead and bond now because interest rates might go up.
I'll try to answer your first question. Getting an owner's rep on board with experience in construction management of these types of projects will help the council with the process itself. And then having, having that process defined, whichever method is chosen, whether it's design, build, CM, CG, whatever these terms are, having that group of people work together to engineer savings into the cost of the building is where the effort's going to be best spent in reducing the costs. I can't speak to you about the bonding, whether it makes sense to postpone bonding until later in the year or take all the money out now. So.
Well, you know, from what I understand, we, we know we will not need those funds for probably at least eight months to 12 months. And, you know, even if you start construction as soon as possible, right? So it seems odd to bond in January and begin accruing interest when you don't need the, those funds for at least potentially 12 months or more. And, you know, justification for that would be that rates are going up. Don't even know if you need to bond for the full $9.5 million.
Yeah, I think, I think the first step, Blaine, is to get someone on board who has experience in these matters and then they can advise the council on what the best approach would be as to the timing. For right now, we have the information from staff from Bond Council on what issuance would be when we're going out for bond ratings, but we, I don't know that we've tied down the date yet for the sale of bonds.
Well, we have a calendar for it.
Do we have it now?
And, and our finance advisor will go over that later this evening.
Okay.
What the process is, we adopt a resolution that says, indicating our intent to the public borrowing the money. At that point, if we ever want to hit the brakes, we can hit the brakes. We get a rating. Right now, we're scheduled to get a rating in mid-January. Once we get a rating, that's, rating's good for about 60 days. So if we are not intent on borrowing the money by, you know, late January, early February, then we would probably need to hit the brakes before we get our rating because there's a cost to get the rating. And that's, that's a decision of the city council. We, our financial advisor will go into the, we talked about this last week, about the timing and whether it's, again, we can't predict interest rates, so we don't know. But generally, late January, early February is a good time to sell bonds as far as getting a good price on your bonds. But, you know, to wait a few more months is something that we can do too. Once we get an architect on board and they start working, we have to pay them. I mean, there's, we will start incurring costs right away, but we won't, we won't know what our cost estimate is until later on in the process, until we actually bid. Then we'll know our hard costs as far as that's concerned. But right now, we're working off a construction estimate given to us by Think Architecture.
Right.
Scott, do you think we can get to the point of knowing what our hard costs will be with the million plus we have in impact fees?
Potentially, yeah. I, because I don't, yeah, I don't think we would spend all that through the architectural services and some of the general contractor costs that we might incur before we actually put a shovel in the ground. But a million dollars probably ought to get us through most of that process.
Thanks.
I, I have a question. Blaine, do you know what the interest rate is right now?
I'm told it's just over 3% for bonds of this nature.
I thought, what is it? Do we know what it is today?
Well, that's the number I gave Blaine a couple of days ago after talking to our financial advisor.
Okay. Do you know what it's going to be next January?
Oh, well, yes, of course.
My point.
You can take it to the bank. And do you know how much interest you would accrue between January and December of next year at three?
With an unknown interest rate?
No. If you could let me finish with a three, say 3.25% interest rate. I mean, that's about where they are now. Do you know how much interest you'd accrue?
So we don't know what the interest rate is going to be next year?
Oh, okay. Well, could you guess?
Is that right? No.
I'm going to ask to, to move off of this subject. I think we should hear from our financial advisor tonight from the bond, bonding agency, so we can get some information on that. The next step would be to get on board an owner's representative who does actually have experience in these matters and advise the council as to the best course of action for whether bond immediately or, or hold off on bonding.
Well, just for the record then.
Are you all right with that, council?
Yeah. Just for the record then, you're going to be accruing somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 in interest and it's pretty clear that we don't need that right now. We don't need the money right now. So you're talking pretty significant dollars.
Your point's well taken, Blaine. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the open session. Let's move to consent items. Any discussion?
Not for me.
If not, I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent items. Second.
All right. We have a motion. That was Eric. And a second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next, we're going to consider the appointment of Linda Jo Clegg as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Is Linda here?
Here.
Okay. Diana, did you want to speak at all to that?
Just very, very wonderful citizen, has devoted a lot of time and effort already to survey, serving the community. She's a teacher by trade and my interview with her was wonderful. She has a lot of ideas. She's anxious to get busy and get serving. So my recommend is that she be approved.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion. Do you want to make it, Diana?
I, I would love to. All right. I would love, I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Linda Jo Bowman Clegg.
Oh.
As a historic preservation committee member.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Diana, second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item eight A is to present our Finance Academy graduates. And Scott Barrington will, will take care of that.
Last January, maybe it was early February, we did our budget and planning retreat with the city council. And one of the things that was requested is that Denise and I set up a, what we would call a Finance Academy that would give residents a chance to come in and learn some of the basics of city budgeting, revenues, expenditures, how the money flows, where the, what funds that we have available and, and that type of deal. So Denise and I wrote up the program. We did this in, the first two sessions in March and then we got kind of waylaid with a bunch of meetings on other issues and we did our third session in November. Briefly, what we did on the first session is we talked about the different funds that the city has, enterprise funds, general funds, special revenue funds. We talked about the revenues where the city gets its money through taxes and fees. We spent a little bit of time on sales tax and how that's collected and property tax, which are our two major tax collections. And so we, we talked to the group about how we receive those funds. And then we talked about the expenses and where the money goes. Denise had a pie chart that showed that Public Safety generally in our general fund is our largest expense and then showed all the other departments and where they came in at. Our second session, we talked about the budget process, where we start with staff and the city council sitting down in a budget retreat and talking about the priorities for the year and really saying, okay, we have X amount of dollars. What, what do we need to do with that money? We talked about the, the timeline from early January to the budget adoption, which is in late June. And then the, we have budget guidelines as a city that we try to follow as far as a good budgeting management principles. And so we talked about that. Session three is what we, what I just call a budgeting exercise where we, I wrote up a little bit of a scenario that if these people were on the city council, here's some of the challenges that they faced, which included limited revenues, but many needs. And we had a nice, good discussion as to what that meant and what priorities are and how a city council has to ascertain, you know, from the public what those needs are and how that money needs to go. So we had a handful of people that signed up for this and if they attended two, at least two of the three sessions, then we qualified them as a graduate. So now what that gets them in the real world, I don't know, but they do get a certificate from us saying that they went through the Finance Academy. And we asked them to come tonight. I know we have a few here, not all, but as I call their name, they can come up and receive their certificate. Lori Williams. We'll hold the applause till we hand them all out, if that's okay. Blaine Thatcher.
Hi.
Steve Sweetwood. Steve's here. Ben Stanley. Ben got to cheat because he, you know, he lives this on a regular basis. Carl Cooney. Carl's here. Mario Gonzalez. Mario's one of our city employees that wanted to learn a little bit more about the finance side. Cindy Bean, who I don't think's here. Cindy's another city employee who joined us. And Jennifer Baptista. Okay, now we can applaud. Yes. Now that we have the program all written up and ready to go, we'll probably do this again next year. August is a good time for us, at least for Denise, where we have the budget process over and we're just starting into the audit. So with all of her free time she has, we're able to do it at that time. So any questions from the council?
Well done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to do item eight A and a half.
Dan, you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I had an opportunity late last week to represent Pleasant Grove City at an awards banquet where I received on behalf of the, of the city, a certificate of appreciation that I would like to forward on to Deion Giles. He and his great crew often work in relative obscurity and do tremendous things in the bitter cold, like today, doing great things for our city. This particular award was from the Utah County Department of Health. It was recognition for the efforts of the Parks Department in encouraging healthy youth and restricting and prohibiting e-cigarettes and vaping and things like that at our city parks. So this is really recognition for the entire elected body, for our city attorney who helped draft some of the language that we used. But this certificate, Deion, I think would look a lot better in the Parks Department office, or maybe you could give it to Kathy if you don't want to display it and she can put it with the minutes. But it doesn't really fit in my house. So I'm going to send it down to you. Thank you for the great work that you do.
All right. We now have the privilege of interviewing applicants for the Public Safety Building Owner's Representative. We've had four applicants. We've had Frank Mills, Guy Fugel, David Holdaway, and I hope I pronounce this right, Wember. Is that right? Wember, response. And we're going to go in that order. What we'll do is we'll have each person take a total of 15 minutes. You can take five or so to present your qualifications or anything else you wanted to present to the council. And then we can do some Q and A. If you wrap up before then, we'll go ahead and, and move to the next individual. And then when we're done, later on in the session, later on tonight, we're going to have a closed session where we discuss the applicants and possibly come to a decision as a council. Anything else, Scott?
Well, yeah, if the council comes to a decision, they will come back out of the closed meeting and make that decision in, in the regular, regular public meeting.
So that's pretty much the last item that's on our agenda this evening is the closed session. So if you needed to leave and you wanted to come back to find out what was going on, we don't know what time that will be because there are about 20 items before that.
We can also call them too tomorrow.
Okay. Either way, though, we'll let you know. So we appreciate you, citizens, and also our firm for applying to this, to this opportunity. So we look forward to hearing from you this evening. So Frank, why don't you go ahead and?
Yes, I'm Frank Mills. Been a resident of Pleasant Grove all my life.
You pulled that a little closer to you, Frank.
It won't take 15 minutes.
Okay.
And I spent the majority of my working years working for Pleasant Grove City, as you see on my resume that I sent in. I have spent a lot of time with different projects that have taken place in Pleasant Grove. Certainly, some of our public works projects would have been up into the range of the dollars of what you're spending on this project. I have had experience in working with these projects on everything from acquisition of the right of way to working with the architect on the design work and with our finance people on the financing and then through to the construction. I've been, I can't say that I've enjoyed every minute of it because there's decisions that you're going to be asked to make and that you're going to ask this individual that takes this position to make. They're going to be decisions that aren't going to be popular. They're going to be decisions that don't make you happy. But one thing I did find this out, as the city employees, we worked on this. We work for the citizens of Pleasant Grove. They don't work for us. for the citizens of Pleasant Grove, they don't work for us. And I think back of one of the first projects that we had was on Fifth North. And that was back in the early 70s. And Fifth North, those of you that travel it now, travel a nice 56-foot, excuse me, 66-foot right-of-way road that can handle the traffic, because it needs to move. That road was about 26-foot wide, in some places it was much narrower. We had to go in and work with property owners to get the right-of-way, work on the design work that needed to be done, and get the infrastructure put under the ground, all before we could go to work. I won't, I won't say that it wasn't a, one of the most pleasant experiences we've had, but when you were, when you finish a project like that, or one like 1100 North from First East to 20th West, and you step back and take a look at it, you realize how many people it takes to get a job like that done. And it takes somebody, you're going to need someone that can work not only with the contractor and the city, but is going to be willing to work with the citizens. The other project, I listed the projects that I'd worked on there, but the other one that comes to mind that we worked on from the beginning to the end was the construction of the public safety building that currently stands next to the city hall there. We started, I worked on that from, while I was on the city council, made application to, I think it was University of Oklahoma, to have a study come out to see if we needed a new public safety building. We were meeting in a two, the public safety building was a two-car garage in back of the old city hall. So we don't want to hear the public safety saying they're crowded now. And we had a, we had a firm come up to the evaluation on what we needed, and what would be the best way to go about obtaining funds to construct the facility. We worked with the contractor, the architect, was a local architectural firm. Ben Walker's brother was with them, and was the one that was in charge of designing that, designing that building. We worked many ways to try and cut the costs as best that we could. We applied for grants to build it, and when we were able to come up with every way possible to save money and do the grants, Pleasant Grove City ended up spending $90,000 on that building. Now, it only cost us half a million dollars. It cost $590,000 to build it, but we were only, we only had to borrow $90,000. And so there's things that you can do to help save that money that the citizens have voted to spend to build these buildings. And so I, I would be hopefully able to do the work that would need to be done in taking care of this, but I realize that the, at least two of the men that I know very well that are going to be speaking to you in just a few minutes are more than qualified to be doing this job. And so with that, I'm going to open it up, and you can ask me the questions that you want to ask.
Okay. Questions for Frank? I'd like to start with one. Frank, you, you've worked for the, you worked for the city for about 30 years, is that right?
I retired with 34 years.
34 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. We got more questions, Frank. Is that it, Mayor? Was that?
And what year did you work on this project that you were just talking about?
The public safety building? I think it was about 1974, or something like that, that the building was built.
Thank you. Other questions?
So Frank, thank you for putting your name into the hat, per se, I guess, right?
Thank you.
You already talked a little bit about your role in the public safety building. Talk to me a little bit, you listed other one, the library there. What was your role there? And maybe list your biggest accomplishment on that and the public safety.
I don't, I don't think any of them were my accomplishment. You got, you got a lot of elected officials and employees in the different organizations that we worked with, with none of them. But when we got ready to do the library, the first thing we did was to get with the Utah State Library Board, come down and took an evaluation. Now, it doesn't take much to evaluate the old stone building across the street and decide that we need to come up with some different type of a library, but when you have Dot Smith pushing it, you're going to move, you're going to move as fast as you can to get the best you can. And so we had the Utah State Library Board and their architects, along with architect firm that we had hired, again, a local firm, Kent Walker. And they met with us, we looked at a location to build it, and some of the input we took from our local library board, and as they went out to the citizens, they felt like they wanted to make sure, some of the things they wanted to make sure was that we had a lot of windows in it, a lot of spaces that could be, could be looked out of. They also wanted to make sure that we had some meeting places that people could come in and sit down and relax, and just enjoy sitting and maybe looking out the window, and not necessarily having to read, but to be able to meditate. Also wanted a place that had some room to expand. And so we, we took all of that into consideration as we looked at the place to build it, and as we were doing it, decided that in the basement that wasn't being used at the time would be a place that we could put a theater, and also a place for the senior citizens to meet. And so we combined that with it, and that, again, enabled us to be able to save some money, because the senior citizens did, they were meeting at the back of the old wreck building here, in that room. And it was inadequate for the number of people they had coming, and so by doing, by including them and working with our theater group, we were able to abstain, obtain some extra funding that was able to help us fund the project, and be able to come in with the dollar amount that we could handle.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I do. Frank, thanks for the many, many years. 30, what was it? 34.
That's okay. I'm getting the retirement pay, and that's what you're.
It's way better. No, but the, what I have learned in the last three years is that there have been a lot of people who have donated a lot of their lives to Pleasant Grove, and I'm very grateful. When you think about this project, what is it that excites you the most? When it's all done, what will be the most, the thing that you will be the most proud of?
Well, one of the things, and you, and it's no secret, you all know this, that I haven't been on board completely with this project because of different things that had taken place. But one of the things that I do look at is I, I retired as a volunteer fireman after 34 years, and so there is a little bit of me there, still with the fire department, and in working with the public safety department. And now that the citizens, we as citizens have chosen to have the building built, whether the building is built here or in another location, I think we got a chance to make it a crown jewel now for something that is being built in Pleasant Grove. This is going to be something, I don't care where it's built, that we want to have it built that we can be proud of as a community, and that if it was built, let's say it was built someplace other than here, that the neighborhood that it was built in would be proud to have them as neighbors, and would be proud to say, we're, we're part of the community. And so to be involved in something like that has interested me. And I, and then I had some people that said, you know, you've got some time, go, go put it in, and so, but like I say, you've got two men here that are the pros.
Anyone else? Questions?
I've got a quick one, Frank, and I echo the sentiments that have been expressed, of gratitude for your willingness to do this. It is a tremendously generous offer that you've made to the city, and it's motivated by true selfless service, and we appreciate it. One of the things that you said that I loved was that we should work for the citizens. One of the things that's a possibility with this project is that groups of citizens may band together and petition whoever we choose as the owner's rep to do things a certain way. What do you feel like is the proper level of involvement of the citizenry, and how would you handle that kind of a situation if you had public members asking you to do a certain thing a certain way?
It's interesting, because early this evening, I leaned over to Mayor Holdaway. He'll always be the mayor. Guy that hired me. But anyway, you look over at him and say, doesn't this bring back memories? We both smiled and said, bad. It doesn't matter what the project is that you're working in the community, you need, you're not going to be successful at it unless you get the citizens on board. And you're going to find, it's just, just like when we started the recreation building up there, you're going to find as you get started, you're going to have citizens that are going to come in and they're going to have input, and they're going to say, hey, what about if we did this? What about if you were able to do this? And so they're going to come in with suggestions, and the individual needs to be willing to listen to them. Then he needs to be willing to talk with the contractor and with the elected officials, and see if that is something that is going to fit in to what we want. Because I'll tell you this, if I learned one thing over 35 years, or 34 years, you don't have all the answers, and they don't have all the answers, but somewhere out here, you're going to come up with about 98% of the answers. And if you can use their information to help you out, you're going to be a lot more successful. If you got them on your side, than if they think that all you're doing is giving them listening, and then shutting it off and not, that's as far as it goes to.
Thanks, Frank.
Anyone else? Okay. And then we noticed one thing, on the compensation, I think you, for you, this would be a voluntary position, except for out-of-pocket expenses.
Yes. As I put on there, I strongly believe this, and I hope that if I don't ever do anything else right, that this is it, that there's going to become a time in your life that you're going to be in a position that you can either do something for your community, your church, or an organization, that you can step in and do it for them, and not expect compensation, because they've done a lot for you. I'm at that position at this time in my life, and so that's the only reason that I had listed that.
Well, thank you, Frank. We appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Guy Fugel.
Great to be with you this evening. Guy Fugel, you already had my name.
We know who you are.
So anyway, but there's a lot of things with this project that's coming forward that I think I personally could be of great assist with. And my biggest knowledge in, and I'll clarify, I'm a general contractor, but mainly I'm a ditch digger. So anyway, but, so we dig a hole, we bury it, but a lot of the stuff we do also includes many structures that we, we hire out and have built, and have personally been built, several buildings that our family owns. And, you know, you approach and you asked, oh, I, and I will say, or I go any further there, I really give my thanks to Frank Mills and for his service. And I need to do that publicly, because I know what, you know, where we could be and what he's done for public works projects. And especially one specifically I was involved in was the, was this, was the fire station and buying this, the old shop and lunchroom that we're sitting in here now, from the Alpine School District, and, and moving from the upholstery shop, we can call it now, or I don't know what it is now, but, and, and we did that really economically, and there's a lot of sweat equity, a lot of people involved in that, especially Frank. And it was a great facility, especially moving from where we were. And if it hadn't been for Frank's guidance, I don't think we would have been there, and the decisions made. So thank you, Frank. You know, it's my, my construction background more in, in projects, in building projects, comes from my 19-year service with Alpine School District, Board of Education, and serving on the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which served with Dave Holdaway on that committee. And it was an interesting thing, as many schools, 30 new schools, and 14 remodels, replacements, and a bus facility that were our tenure, so we had quite a few projects that we were working on, and worked with different architects, and mainly all those were CMGC contracts that we worked under, which I think works good. I like that. But also, I'll put a plug in for design bid build. I think if we can get a contractor on board with our architect going forward, I think that's a true cost saving, because it's always better before than after to do some valued engineering. And, and especially in today's market here, we've, we're seeing prices go up, and I will share with you that two things that will hit us the worst on this building, that is continues to escalate up, is masonry and still erection, the steelwork. And really, if you bring a contractor in for, and then, and I don't mean to throw architects under the table, okay, but my history is, they can cost you a lot of money. And I'm sorry if there's any architects in here, but it's just sometime you just, well, where did this come from, you know? So anyway, but I'll leave it at that and move on. I think there can be some, definitely value engineering that we can do beforehand, and even possibly look at a design build. And I think another thing we can look at is, say, over the masonry, is maybe do a entertain, looking at a concrete tilled up, especially for the fire station. And I don't know where you're, you're at on timeframe, I guess, but I hear like we're not going to start anything for a year. Well, I can't see why the fire station can't be coming out of the ground in several months. And if we do build the fire station where the rec center is, if we're, and that goes forward, I think that one of my, I would suggest that after your commitments are done in February and March, you, you have a contractor already on board that doesn't need an architect, and we bring the building down, and so the site's ready for when we are. With that, I will open up to questions.
I've got one. A few.
Okay. You talked about in your, your write-up, working with various architects and contractors. Talk to me about that process of working with that team, and then possibly working with a side team with the city team, per se, right? Which would include the chiefs, admin, council, citizens.
Well, you bring, you know, if we bring a, an architect on, just, let's go the architect out there, and they need to know our wishes, and, and hopefully we, and I, I don't know where, how far has this building been designed?
We're using the 5%?
Yeah. The way it was described to us by Think Architecture, we've done about 5% of the work, which is fairly high level. Most of it is assessing the needs of the different departments, putting those needs down in terms of square footage, and putting together rough floor plans as to how that might fit, and then using, I think, systems analysis with their own database of past projects to estimate the costs. And that's where those costs came from that they've proposed to us so far. So as far as actual architectural drawings, we haven't gone that far.
Okay. But you had, you have a concept.
We have a concept.
Well, that's, that's a good start, so anyway, but, and, and working with, I, I think it's a joint effort with, you know, input from, still some input from the city, builder's rep, the, the ones that have real ownership in it, the police department, the fire department, the courts. And so we can see, make sure it's going to work for what they need to do, and analyze, and, and let's get away with, get away from any dead space we have that isn't going to be functional, that maybe somebody drew a line here and they didn't know what, what to do with it. And so that would, I think it's a whole collaboration of a whole group of people, including the council, one way to move forward.
And then one last follow-up, sorry. Sorry, I know Diana's just begging to, Ben touched on it a little bit, right? This process hasn't been political one bit, right?
No, no, no.
Not one bit. How would you?
How would you work with said outside distractions, individuals, you name it, right? You get into this process, the scope of work that you have to work with, how would you work with it with, like Councilman Stanley said, that if individuals are coming to you saying, no, you need to do it this way, no, I think you need to do this now, how, how would you handle that?
Well, we, we need to be open and listen to everybody and, and maybe they'll bring something to the table that we totally overlook. And I think you have to, to do that, but then in the end, you have to move along. We can't spend three years building this project. And we need to bring it out of the ground as fast as we can and, and get it up. And maybe everybody, you know, you can't build it by committee, I'm sorry, just, construction doesn't work that way. So that's, that's my process. But we do need to be open and listen to our citizens and take their input and, and apply it to where it can work best.
Thank you. Thanks for putting in, by the way.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would love to. Same, the same question as, well, first of all, I, I have the same thanks for the Fugel family. I think the Fugels were one of the first to show up in this beautiful little area, weren't they? Weren't they pretty close to the first?
One of the, some of the area. Somebody had the found monkey town up there.
Were you the monkeys? But I know you have also devoted a lot of time and, and energy to our, our little town, our city. And I'll ask the same question that I asked Mr. Mills in that is, when you think about the whole project, what is it that you're, when it's all said and done, what is it that you're going to look back and look at and just say, I, that was really good or that's, that's what I feel the most proud about?
Well, something that we all can be proud of is as well. We've, we came, it was a long process and we all came together and we had something to be proud of and it's functional and will work for our citizens for the years to come.
Thank you.
Guy, a couple of things you didn't mention in your resume, you were also a volunteer fireman here in the city. How long were you with that?
They just declassified him last week.
Well, they still give me, I still have emeritus status, so anyway, so that's, you know, I guess that's what they do with a lot of old people. No, it was close to twenty years. I served and served seven as an EMT before I was part of the fire department when we were kind of combined in there. So had both sides of that. And also have sat on the planning commission here, which was one of the great things I did.
You also on the city council at one point?
No.
No.
That would have been my brother.
Anyone else?
Yes, if I may, Guy, appreciate again your generosity. That is a generous offer to help us in the capacity and the way you've offered to do so. Eric's asked the question I was going to ask, so let me ask you this instead. Could you, could you outline for me some of the contractual relationships your company has with the city? I've had people ask me if there are conflicts of interest and I, I don't presume to make an opinion about that, but I'd love to hear kind of the history of your city, your company's relationships with the city and if you have ongoing dealings with the city.
No, I don't, any ongoing now, we don't have any contract relations. And it's been many years since we've done a project that was bid for Pleasant Grove City because we work for the utilities. You know, we love tearing up Pleasant Grove's roads.
You and Mother Nature both.
Yeah, well, I mean, we dig a hole and bury it, but yeah, there's no, and if there has been any, it hasn't, we haven't taken compensation by anything we've done for the city and different things we've done. So it's been volunteer and so, and we figure on doing that going forward. Our work doesn't really, and we, we got out of the water in the sewer business many, many years ago, so we really don't do those sectors, would bid for the city or do roads. Only thing, we're involved in a lot of road projects because we're there with the utility companies replacing the utilities. Well, that may be, I wonder, that may be a concept that, you know, people see us there.
Thanks, appreciate that.
On your resume, you also put down that you, you would not expect a fee for doing this work. Okay. And then just, just something maybe the rest of you aren't aware of or are aware of, when we did the Discovery Park project, I know I worked with Frank on one side with the city to get this thing going, but the day that we needed help getting, I don't know what it was, fifty or sixty of those telephone poles set in place, concreted in and cut to the right size, it was his dad, him, his brother, and then a ton of crew from your company, and then you guys recruited UPNL to come out with their trucks and they augured the holes, put those poles in, concreted them in, set them in place. We did not receive one bill for that. I just think that the council and the public should be aware of the background of service that many people in this community, especially Guy and his family, continue to do for us. So thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, thanks Guy.
I'd like to make one other comment. We're heating this, trouble is this should be fall and we should be having, having something to go bid for in January or February, at least by March, just, you save three to five percent. So I just wanted to share that with you. That's just the way the construction cycle works in Utah.
By hitting it at that time?
By bidding early, you get, if you bid in the fall, you'll get higher prices by three to five percent.
Okay. So the sooner we bid before fall, the better?
It is, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Dave? Give us a second for everyone to clear out who wants to clear out there.
Up to the podium, people leave. Typical, I'm used to that.
No, the scouts have just hit their hour mark.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to, and the consideration, glad to just even get an interview, you know, that's good. But let me read a little bit from the information I provided to city council. I said, as a sixty-plus year resident, I didn't want to admit how many years, but it's more than sixty. Resident of Pleasant Grove, I am keenly interested in the progress of our community and the preservation of our unique heritage. My understanding of the community and its needs has been enhanced by my serving as twelve, two and a half years on the city council and twelve years as mayor of Pleasant Grove. I was privileged to serve on two years on the Blue Ribbon Commission that was charged with recommending construction options and cost-saving measures for the proposed public safety facilities as we went through those first two bond elections. As far as my background, I have a bachelor of engineering science degree in electrical engineering from BYU and graduate studies in master of business administration from University of Santa Clara in California. I was, while working for this, my occupation with the school district, I was a member of the Utah Facilities Operation and Management Association, which is called UFOMA. And that's all of the, pretty much all of the school districts and a lot of the public universities and so on belong to that. And the idea was to share ideas on how to operate and to build buildings within the state. And I served actually as the president of that organization for a year. While involved in UFOMA, we had semi-annual meetings and we had training from the Utah State Fire Marshal's Office on building code compliance and safety and security of buildings, those sorts of things. And so I picked up a lot of good information in UFOMA experience. I served as twenty years as the Director of Physical Facilities for Alpine School District. I was responsible for new building construction, remodeling and addition to school facilities. My budget was about thirty-five million dollars per year for those projects, plus another eight or ten million for maintenance of buildings. During that time, we constructed twenty-three elementary schools, including the Mahogany, Mount Mahogany School here in Pleasant Grove, five junior high schools, four high schools, bus maintenance, office and parking facility, the district office building in American Fork, a warehouse and office building in Linden. And I lost track, but we did approximately two hundred remodeling addition projects, including the addition of Pleasant Grove High School and Pleasant Grove Junior High and Grove Crest Elementary, a bunch of them. I was responsible to maintain about five million square feet of district facilities with a crew that did everything from electrical to janitorial, all that sort of thing. One of the things that I forgot, almost forgotten about, because it's been so long ago, the time this building was, was obtained from the school district, I think I was, at that point, I was mayor and kind of helped negotiate that with the school district and helped try to, in the remodeling and getting that organized to get this, this building remodeled. Also, when the swimming pool was constructed and also the recreation building, those were built on properties owned by Alpine School District. And I had the opportunity, kind of wearing two hats, to help negotiate the exchange of property for the swimming pool and the exchange of property for the rec center and the agreement that the school district would maintain the parking lot and so on at the rec center. As far as some of the things I had to do in terms of getting buildings built, I was responsible for the development of requests for proposals for architects, construction managers and general contractors. I helped develop criteria for rating and selecting these firms and managed all the aspects of the construction, including working with the architect and all of the stakeholders in establishing program and space requirements and preliminary design concepts, designing development of construction documents and specifications, performance contracts, value engineering reviews with construction budget, establishing and monitoring the construction schedule, weekly team meetings and inspections of the projects, recommendation of progress payments as, as the project went forward, review and recommendation of change orders, maintaining a file of all the construction documents, submitting reports that have to be done on a regular basis to the state fire marshal's office. And then I provided periodic reports to the district superintendent, board of education. I won't go into the rest of this, just to say that in my opinion...
You're saying that's the abbreviated version?
I'll be very abbreviated. In my opinion, politically, I enjoyed working with the, with the Blue Ribbon Commission, but I didn't take a stand on opposing or favoring the bond. I felt like the voters ought to make up their mind on that. I tried to keep an open mind. And if, if in this position as a owner's representative, my obligation and responsibility would be to the mayor and the city council, to be sure that the decisions that they made were carried out and to be the facilitator, not necessarily the decision maker. I do think though, Howard, the person in this position would have to have an open mind, be willing to listen, as Guy said, we don't know everything, in fact, we probably don't know much actually. And everybody's input would be very, very useful and that should be considered and, and looked into. The other thing that, just for your information, that might help decide whether this is a feasible project, I checked with my colleague at the school district, former colleague, the Sky Ridge High School that was recently constructed in Lehigh was about a hundred and ninety-five dollars per square foot. That include the architect fee, the, the city charge an impact fee, I'm not sure you're going to be charging yourself an impact fee, the inspections, et cetera, et cetera, and the FFNE, which is furnitures, fixtures and equipment, about a hundred and ninety-five. And so I'm thinking you're going to be about one ninety-five to about two twenty-five on this building, based on roughly fifty thousand square feet that you, you're thinking of building. I think you're in the ballpark. The last thing I'd like to mention is, and Frank didn't mention this, but a lot of the money that we used to construct the library was donations. And I heard somebody talk about probably trying to get some donations. I would really pledge my support to try to do that. I mean, there's some folks in the community that I'm acquainted with that might be able to help and might be willing to donate. We got, we raised quite a lot of money for, for donations to the, to the library, but I think you'd need to get moving on that really quickly because you need to know, either have money committed or have the money in your pocket before you decide on the scope of your project. Because once you've, once you've spent that nine point five million plus whatever else you might have in the bank, you don't have any place else to get money. And so my commitment would be, if I was in this job, to try to, it might take a Solomon to tell you the truth, to make it work with all the divergent opinions and concerns the community has, but you'd have to stay in the budget. And one of my objectives would be to try to make sure that happened. Okay? I probably used too much time, I'm sorry for that.
Questions, council?
Mayor, I'll, thank you for being here as well. You're the only one who wore a tie, that gives you extra points in my book.
Let me, let me, let me qualify that. I have another job. And it ended at five o'clock and I barely got time to, I didn't have time to change. You probably would never see me in a suit again.
I think it looks great. That gives you extra points, like I said. You talked about a Solomon, to navigate the waters, I think that's, I think that's true. I think that your three terms as a mayor suggests that you might have that capability. How would you handle public interaction, requests from groups of citizens for specific changes or specific requests petitioning you and...
Well, I take a lot of notes, for one thing. I, I think what you have to, to do is be able to step back from the emotion. And, you know, and I have, I have some bias in this too, because I'm part of this community and, and I have ideas on what things ought to be, but you've got to step back and you've got to really listen and not, not allow yourself to become emotionally charged. And I'm about as unemotional as anybody can get, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to go out with a pitchfork and torch, you know, and, and that sort of thing. So it's going to take somebody that can listen, take notes, get back with, I understand you're going to put kind of a committee together with the two chiefs and maybe a council member, whatever that is, and, and really have some discussions and say, okay, what makes sense and what doesn't. But as I learned in the school district, when you get a principal and thirty schoolteachers all trying to tell you how to build a school building and you've got so much money to do, you have to learn how to say, no, this is not going to work, we don't have the money to do it, let's look at something else, let's look at different ideas. And, you know, we had to do a lot of that.
Thanks, mayor.
Other questions?
Well, I have to ask my standard. So also, and I also thank you for the many years that you've served, twelve years as mayor, gosh.
It's a death wish. Oh, actually, I enjoyed every minute.
I told the mayor one time, what kind of idiot would run again?
You're looking at one.
Anyway, I can't even imagine how much time you've sacrificed for Pleasant Grove, so I, I'm thanking you.
Thank you.
And I, and I know we feel, we all feel the same, so that's coming from all of us. So when it's all said and done, when you look back, what is it that is going to excite you? What is it that you want to tell your, your great-grandchildren?
I, you know, as, as a longtime resident of Pleasant Grove, and I'll, I'll correct, Guy's my cousin, by the way, we have the same ancestor. Eighteen sixty-nine is when he settled in Pleasant Grove.
Eighteen sixty-nine.
Eighteen sixty-nine. And so I have a feeling, and I'm old enough to remember the old Ideal Market Clark store on Main Street and kind of how Pleasant Grove looked and still looks and kind of what the heritage, what the feeling of the community is. If we could build facilities that we could look at that weren't just, you know, a concrete building with a roof on it, but it looked like it belonged to the, this community of Pleasant Grove and that, you know, it belonged here, we should, we're unique and that sort of, that, that'd be a, a great thrill. I mean, I, I love building buildings. Every time we open a new school, I'd always go to the school the first day and watch the look, the look... Every time we opened a new school, I'd always go to the school the first day and watch the look, the look on the kids' faces when they'd come in to see this new building. And I know the district got criticized because we built some pretty fancy buildings, Westlake High School and some others. But I don't apologize, though. The kids deserved it, and I think it helps to get their, it helps them to be enthused about being in school. And I, so I want people to be enthused about being in Pleasant Grove, and, and the workers that work in those buildings to be enthused about working in the building, because it's, it's, you know, the best we could do for the money we had.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Mr. Holdaway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, I have one question. Sorry. I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, I thought you could let me go.
I was just trying to psych you out. Sorry. No. You've talked about scope of work, getting involved quickly and getting things moving pretty quickly.
Right.
Talk to me about, and it may be different with the school district, how they go into different processes, but talk to me about the design bid build and then design build. Do they prefer a process over one or the other?
We prefer, as Guy mentioned, probably 90% of our buildings are built with construction manager, general contractor. And as I pointed out in my thing here, the advantage is that if you get together as a team, you know who the architect is and you know who's going to be building the building. And they work together during the design. You don't get a design and then hand it to the contractor. He's involved because he can say, you know, I think I could do this cheaper if we used block instead of brick, or if we did this instead of that. And so if they're involved, then you can do a lot of value engineering during the process. Secondly, when you bid it, you don't bid it as a lump sum. The construction manager bids a fee to do the management work on the project and the general conditions, which are his trailer and his utilities and all the stuff that's going to cost him to build a building. And then each individual subcontractor bids, you know, concrete, steel erection, masonry, electrical, mechanical systems, all that's all different bids. And then the owner and the team can get together and review those bids and say, okay, what makes sense. And you don't always have to go with a low bid. The state procurement office has set up a process that you can pre-qualify contractors, subcontractors. But then you can actually tweak the whole project right up to the last dollar, and then the general contractor, the contractor gives you what's called a guaranteed maximum price. And that is, he'll build it for this much money based on all these bids from the subs and material suppliers and so on. And it sure gives you a lot of flexibility, rather than just sending a bid out and you, you don't even, maybe you don't know who the subcontractors are going to be on the job, if you do it that way.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dave, thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right. We have a very fancy application here from Wember. Is it Wember?
It is Wember, yes.
Okay. Would you gentlemen like to introduce yourselves and then go ahead and time yours?
I would, I would. I'd start by saying, you gentlemen cast a long shadow. I appreciate your years of service as well. Thank you for everything. Yes, one of these things is not like the other. I'm not retired. That's the problem. Paul Wember, owner of Wember, and we are an owners rep firm. That's what we do. We've been doing this for 13 years, 70 successful completed projects on time, on budget. Our team, and I'll introduce myself and the members that are not here, and then Tom can introduce himself here as well. So Barry, who is in the packet that you received, is on our team. Now Barry is a local resident. He's a professor at UVU, PhD, and a BYU grad. So we're thrilled to have him as part of our team to provide the local knowledge that you have expressed a desire to have. Some of the questions that have been addressed already about, you know, who are the good local contractors, who are the good local architects. You know, Barry's inside knowledge will help complement the service that we provide to countless municipalities. As an owners rep, we've been working actively on projects very similar to yours. This is what we do. We do public sector work. We lead teams, steering committees, and the entire community. We engage them. We operate in a very transparent way through the use of our technologies. We work very closely with the chiefs and other members that are really going to be using this facility, where we hope the focus of this project will shift very quickly, about getting them the ability to do the job that they need to do to give back to the community in the way that they've been trained to do so. So, other person not here, Christabel Cordinas. Christabel is on our team, and she's a vital member as far as organization. We believe that if we're organized, you're organized. And there is a lot of documentation that needs to be managed. And she assists Tom, I, and all of you to make sure that you have full access to all the information, because it is your information. So again, our online project management system gives you complete access to budgets, to all the documentation, current designs, checklist, to-dos, and everything else that we manage for you. So I'm going to hand it over to Tom, let him do a quick introduction. I will say the focus of our presentation is actually, we would much prefer to hear from you. I would rather address questions than go over a packet that we hope that you certainly have read, and I know everyone in this room hasn't read it or had access to it. But if there's something that we can respond to, that would be our preference. If that's not the case, I can talk way too long, so set the timer, so.
Yeah, thank you. And my name's Tom Ferens. I will be the project manager on this project, the lead project manager. A licensed architect is my background. Practiced for about 12 years before joining Paul and his team Wember about two years ago. I'll be, like I said, the main, your main point of contact. I think that was in the proposal for this project. I do live an hour or so away. I do live up in Evansdale, Wyoming is my location, but we go where the project is. As Paul mentioned, we have projects, a lot of projects that have been all over, and we are where the project is. We, we're here to serve you and provide the project that you and the community needs, so. And that's, I like the questions as well, so we'll go right into those.
Go ahead, counsel.
I have a few remaining. Just talking, I'm going to just pull out a couple of your projects, like the Greeley Fire Station, and then maybe the Erie Public Safety Facility you have in here. Could you talk to us a little bit about the budget and how you stayed on budget and some of that processes? And did you deal with the, how did you deal with the chiefs and various things like that, so?
You know, the chiefs were great on both those projects. Chief John Hall on the Erie Police Station was an amazing, amazing guy. And, you know, it's always interesting for me, as obviously a public citizen that operates a private company, to work in the public sector to see truly what kind of dedication they have. And the interesting thing about the chief in that, in both these projects in particular, is, as you can imagine, when we represent a library director, you know, school superintendent, you know, because we do a variety of projects, they're in a situation where they have a full-time job, and that job is their priority, absolutely. Now, they are required, as all of you are now, by the voters, to make this facility a reality. And so they need to be engaged on that. And our role is to work very closely with them to make sure they understand what they're getting, because again, this isn't what they do every day, all day long. As myself, as an architect like Tom, although we don't practice as architects anymore and haven't for a long time, we can speak the language, and a lot of people call us, you know, translators, and that's a really significant role for us. Because honestly, it's a two-way street, because we learn as much about what they need, because every project is unique. There is no canned project. You have a unique site, you've got a unique culture, you've got unique personalities within the departments and how they operate and the vision of how that's going to be implemented. So your program is an amazing starting point, but now you have to make it happen and all fit together. And so you're, to summarize, is we work with them very closely, along with the architects, of course, and if there's a contractor on board. You know, we, we are the facilitators of a process. We are not the directors of that process.
Budgets. Did they come in on desired?
The projects did come on budget. One is in construction right now, and it is targeting to be on budget. The budgets are a little bit higher than what yours are, and, you know, that's something that we could talk about for a long time, of course. They are on budget and they were completed on schedule, or targeted to be on schedule, the other one.
Other questions?
Well, thanks for putting in your application. Gentlemen, grateful to have you here. I had a quick couple of questions about your local resident. You mentioned Barry. Is, is he in Pleasant Grove or is he Cedar Hills? I saw on your packet it had a city named Cedar Grove. I don't know if that was a typographical layer or if that was a-
I'd have to look. I apologize if that's the case.
That's the mix between Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills.
Yeah, some kind of a combo. That's what it sounded like.
We were going for both, you know, as local as we could.
On the front page of the packet, but that's helpful. Tell me a little bit about how you came across the opportunity. We're interested in that. And then also, and this may be a little bit of a base question that I talk about very publicly, but I want to understand your fees, what your fee structure is. I didn't see that in the packet.
The fee structure is in the packet. Did you not see it? $98,000 plus reimbursables.
Thanks. I missed that. I appreciate that. No worries. And then, yeah, how you came across the opportunity?
So Tom and I were in a conference, it was the UFOMA conference that we came across. Oh, that was, sorry, that was a different one. Utah County.
Okay.
Association of County.
Thanks.
Sorry, they were very close together.
Other questions?
Well, I, to be fair, first of all, Wyoming, Wyoming Cowboys, going to be playing BYU here. Sorry, point spread. So when you're done with a project, what is it that you're the most proud of? What is it that you stand back and look at?
I'd like to say, I guess my background, like I said, as an architect, before joining Paul, worked with a lot of communities and, and projects that, and even with some of the school districts we worked with, that this is like the first big project maybe in quite some time, possibly. And what I like and I see coming out of these projects is I always like to help, see my role as helping facilitate getting a project done that the community can be excited about and happy about. Like I said, I've worked with the school district or working with the school district, like now that this is their, they're doing a building for the first time in 50 years. And so sometimes the excitement that I get out of a project is helping and helping facilitate the community, the school district or whatever, to achieve the goal and achieve the project that they are proud and happy with when the project's all said and done.
Thank you.
If I could add to that, I mean, say, that, you know, the messier, the better for us. This is what we do. This is where we take grade and pride. And if you look at our success rate, you'll understand that. You know, and it really goes down to the roots of why I started this company. I transitioned out of architecture into the owners rep market, and it's very rare that I will miss any grand opening where I'm not standing inside the door and watching everybody come in with smiles on their face and all the struggles and talks about budgets and the history of this, for that moment especially, has just dissipated. And, you know, that's a big part of why I do what I do, because to see these projects really give back to the community at the end of the day, it's just amazing. I mean, we could go build Safeways and Walmarts and probably make twice as much money, but that's not what we choose to do.
Thank you.
So, Tom, you mentioned that someone would be onsite. Is that you that would be onsite if, if you folks are selected?
Yeah, I'd be the main point of contact. I will be onsite. And then working with Barry, we see Barry's role being more once construction starts, being that onsite here as often as needed throughout the process. And then I would be more, well, I'd be involved from day one, but through, especially through the planning and at the very beginning. And then I'd be down here through the owner, architect meetings and stuff like that. But Barry would be here, having him here locally, he can be here, you know, as soon as possible if a sudden need arises. So that's why we wanted to have him on the team and being close. But I would be here as, as needed to be.
How long has Barry been a member of Wember?
No, Barry's not a full-time employee. He's a team member of ours. So, and he apologized. He wished he could be here. He actually had knee surgery last week and wasn't able to attend, so.
Probably a little different question because, you know, we don't know you, right? One of these things is not, so you've heard the other three applicants. They, they have a leg up, obviously, from the perspective of knowing Pleasant Grove and having background experience with this type of construction. Where do you see yourselves differentiated in this? Why, why would we consider going with you over someone with experience that's also a resident of our area?
Well, you know, it's interesting, because I thought a lot about that. You know, I think there, you know, with Barry being local, you know, we do check the box of having someone that can be monitoring quality and be a present, on a moment's notice for that matter. Now, from the history standpoint, certainly the legacy that these gentlemen have committed is impressive. But at the same time, sometimes that's a little too close to home. I think you should consider that, you know, as a differentiator, having an outside advisor that is unbiased, that is probably less approachable in some regard, and can manage a process that we do, that's dialed in, that we do every day, all day. And not only this team, but the other seven team members that we have at Wember that we can tap into as a resource for lessons learned and best practices in a current market, I would see that as an advantage.
Anyone else?
Talk to us about value engineering, your experience, and maybe what's the largest amount you've had to deal with, and then I have a follow-up question to that, so.
So, you know, it's funny, because value engineering can be really a negative thing, change orders, all the, all these terrible things. The way that we structure our projects is, we know you have a budget. We know you have a program to meet. We know you have to deliver on those items. The, the way that we approach projects is through proper contingency, which I know has been discussed. We've watched all your meetings. It's in the fact that you can set up alternates.
That was my follow-up question, so thank you.
Yeah. So alternates are critical, right? We have to work through a process, and we have to watch escalation. We have to plan for all these unforeseen conditions, especially on the site. So by doing that, you can set up a strategy that will get you everything you want in a list of priority. There's certain things that the fire chief may like, or the police chief might want as a technology, right, as an example. Technologies are great, because those can happen later in a project. So you're on your value-added list, and as you come in under budget on construction, you can now implement those. And through our schedules, we time those so we know when the go, no-go decision has to be made, so those technologies or enhancements can be implemented. You can't add brick at the end of the project if you wanted block, you know, so you have to build those into the schedule.
Anyone else? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And thank you to all of you that have applied. We're going to continue on with the rest of the agenda, and then we will have our closed session and probably make a decision after. If we make a decision, it'll be announced after that. Frank, did you have something?
Mayor and counsel, you, you've been mandated by the citizens of this community to safeguard and spend as best you can the bond money that has been voted to have you spend for this public safety. You've also been asked with that money to do the very best job you can in building it and getting it built. I would be a hypocrite if I was to leave my name in the running for this position. I can't speak for the last two gentlemen, but I can speak for Dave and for Guy. They are far better than I would ever do at being able to take care of this project. And if you don't select the very best person to do this job, the same citizens that voted to get you that money and to provide the building for these people should take you out here in the street and flog you. And for that reason, I would withdraw my name at this time, because I know that there are at least two here that can do the job much better than I would be able to. I appreciate the opportunity, but I have to be honest with you and with myself. Thank you.
So let the record show that Frank has withdrawn himself from consideration. Thank you, Frank. Okay. If anyone wants to stay, you're welcome to. If not, you're welcome to depart at this time. And we're going to move on with item 9A, which is a public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance, 2016-28, amending the permitted and conditional uses in all residential zones regarding residential facilities for people with a disability, including amending section 101523 to reflect changes made in state code that are applicable to the Pleasant Grove City Code. Ken is going to present. Ken, this is about the fourth time you're going to review this for us, right?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Just wait until he gets it off.
And then say it. Yeah, and this is the fourth time.
When all else fails, plug the cord. Now that we're perfect, Scott, I can tell you about the customer service rep that said, "Sir, we've identified the problem. You're too stupid to own a computer."
Okay, yes, we have talked about this a few times in the past. There were a few items that needed to be reviewed by our city attorney, and that's why it was held and reviewed once again, to make sure that all the verbiage was correct and where we needed it to be, to fall in line with the state code. So, residential facilities for people with a disability, currently that section is called residential facilities for handicapped people, but the new term, of course, is people with a disability, which refers to all kinds of disabilities, not just physical limitations. So there are several different types of facilities that can fall into this category. It could be assisted living, or it could be specifically those that are specific to a certain disability, or even rehabilitation. They all fall within this category. So, state law has determined that there are, these types of facilities are not to be restricted by either distance or by conditional use. They are to be considered permitted in residential zones. So that is the biggest change that we're seeing here. Boy, there we go. Also, the, okay, so I guess I basically outlined all of those. So there's verbiage in the state code. We're changing from conditional to permitted. We're changing the term handicap to disabled and eliminating the current three-quarter-mile required distance between such facilities. Then there's a lot of verbiage in there that surrounds these issues, but they're in your staff report and on the ordinance in your packet as well. So I don't know if you have any questions particularly to this change, but again, it is kind of a housekeeping thing that we kind of need to do to bring ourselves in line with state code.
Any questions for Ken?
Mayor, Council, I'll make the motion. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing, so. All right, we're going to open it up for the public now. If any of you have comments or questions on this item, please come up and state your name. This would fall under coming to your neighborhood. All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up here. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, Council, I move that we adopt an ordinance 2016-28, amending the permitted and conditional uses in all residential zones regarding residential facilities for people with a disability, including amending section 10-15-23 to reflect changes made in state code that are applicable to Pleasant Grove City Code.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Eric by voice. Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to 9B. A public hearing to consider for adoption and ordinance 2016-29 to release a certain portion of existing 40-foot and 20-foot drainage easements for the Palisades Platt D Lot 20... Am I getting this right? 20, I think that's backwards, Platt D 23 Lot subdivision located at 813 East 767 South. Release of easements will be conditional upon approved modifications of existing infrastructure.
Mayor, I had intended to mention when you asked if there were any additional changes to the agenda, that this would be one that would go with the next one, which has been continued. So, yeah, the applicant, I talked to him just before the meeting, and he requested that we move both of them. Date specific to January 3rd.
January, on both of these?
Yes.
Okay, since we didn't cover that in the beginning, then I need a motion to continue both 9B and 9C to dates...
Uncertain.
Are they tied together? Do we need to do them together or separate? Does it matter?
They should be separate. They are totally separate easements.
Separate? Okay. Need a motion to move item 9B to January 3rd, you said?
I make the motion that we move agenda item 9B to January 3rd.
Motion by Sid?
Second.
Second by everybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion on 9C?
The motion that we move item 9C, the adoption of ordinance 2016-30 to January 3rd as well.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ben, second by only Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ken. All right, we're on action items ready to vote. 10A, to consider for approval a one-year extension of approval of the final plat for the Grove Creek Center Commercial Subdivision located at approximately 2168 West Grove Parkway.
Okay, the third of buildings, office buildings that have been built in the Grove Creek Commercial Center has recently been completed, and they need to have this plat taken care of. There's been a few issues that have been hanging out there. A few extenuating circumstances. Staff was working with them after the actual date where it would be considered expired had passed, but we had been working with them on a few items, and they have now requested that a one-year extension be approved, which actually will give them about seven more months to get that completed before it would then expire at that time. So, so we're going back to the end of July when it would have expired, and just asking for an extension from that time until the end of July of this next year.
Any discussion?
I didn't show the location there, the aerial. So it's this building here that was recently completed, but the plat affects all of that area with five lots. That's shown on that.
Okay. Questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of a one-year extension for approval of the final plat for Grove Creek Center Commercial Subdivision located at approximately 2168 West Grove Parkway, Samways Lane neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric.
Second.
Second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Item 10B, to consider approval of an 18-lot final plat for Manila Creek Estates subdivision, Platte A, located at approximately 3,000 North 900 West.
Okay, this plat is the culmination of some efforts that have been ongoing for a little while. You recently had the rezone request come before you for this property that was formerly owned by the Alpine School District, just south of our Manila Creek Park. And that rezone was denied, of course, and so the zoning remains RR. So the applicants have prepared this plat for an RR subdivision with 18 lots, as shown here, off of 900 West. And there is a vicinity plan that connects to both north and south for existing and new-planned plats that you will be seeing coming forward. With this, there's a recommendation on the plat that, well, it's something that we are adding onto the plat, is a note that these four lots at the end of this roadway here not be issued building permits until all of the roadways and other plats are able to be approved, because this actually is just a dead-end road with this first subdivision going in. So without these homes being built, there will only be this home right here that will have an access off of this bulb, which will act as a cul-de-sac until the other developments have come in there. So that will allow for proper turnaround.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, I believe they are. Have representative?
Don't get up. Ken will bring you the microphone.
We understand.
You're Adam, is that right?
I'm here in lieu of Adam. He had a conflict tonight, hence my hands are a little full.
Okay.
But I'm John Linton, I'm representing Dr. Horton, who is the builder of these, the lots you see right here.
Right, and you guys have agreed to the building permit issue on...
Yes.
Those lots?
Yes.
Anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think, I think Ken's done a good job.
All right, we'll bring it back up here. Any further discussion? I apologize, this is not a public hearing, so we won't be able to take comment on this one tonight. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of an 18-lot final plat for Manila Creek Estates subdivision, Platte A, located at approximately 3,000 North 900 West.
Do we want a condition on that about the...
You can mention it, but it's something that we've already requested to be on the plat, so by doing so, your approval will include that.
Yeah.
But I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Eric, a second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item 10C is to consider for approval, to consider approval of an, let's see, I'm getting this wrong, to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-050 of the City of Pleasant Grove, the City of, City, I'm really messing up on this. Let me read this. To consider for adoption a resolution 2016-050 of the City Council of Pleasant Grove City, authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than $9.5 million aggregate principal amount of its general obligation bonds series 2017 and other related matters, and providing for an effective date. Did I read that right this time?
That's very good. Let me introduce Matt Dougdale with George K. Baum, who is our financial advisor on this bond issuance. I'll turn the time over to him and have him explain what's before you.
Thank you, Scott. Mayor, Council, it's great to be with you tonight. Scott said to take no longer than 45 minutes, so I think I can squeeze it into a tight 44.
That was four to five minutes.
Four to five is what I said. Four to five, okay. All right, well, that changes things. Nothing's worse than a bond guy speaking publicly. No, it is, it is an honor to be here tonight. Appreciate my colleague Taylor providing you with my handout. I do have a few extra copies, if anyone's interested. The, congratulations on the election. Tonight is the first official act after that election that's required under state law that is required for the issuance of bonds. And so the resolution before you authorizes the issuance of the bonds. It also, within the resolution, delegates authority to the mayor and to your city administrator to approve the final terms of those bonds, as long as they fit within the parameters that you've set forth by virtue of this resolution. It also creates the maximum interest rate, maximum principal amount, term, et cetera. And so this is approved by the city council, and then when we sell the bonds, again, the mayor and Scott can approve the final sale. The reason that we do it that way, instead of bringing the final bond up back to the city councils, it gives us flexibility in when to sell the bonds. It gives us flexibility that if Tuesday's not a good day to sell bonds, we can sell them on a Wednesday or a Thursday. And so it really gives us flexibility in the marketplace. But with that, I just thought briefly, again, in no more than four to five minutes, wanted to speak just to the marketplace and some things that we're watching. The goal here is to issue these bonds such that it delivers the lowest interest rate and therefore impacts your residents the least by way of cost and interest cost. And so a few of the things we're watching, and you've watched this as well, post-election, we have seen a rise in interest rates, especially in treasury rates and municipal bond rates. And you can see in chart number one where the 10-year treasury has gone. Relative to the last 16 years, we're still in a good spot, even though we're not as low as we were maybe four to five weeks ago, a month ago. Chart two is the yield curve. When you issue a 20-year bond, investors buy bonds in each year, year one, year two, year three. And so by virtue of that, we create a yield curve. And so you can see the red line on that chart illustrates that we have seen a rise in that yield curve as well. However, the market's volatile, and one thing that we've strategized on is when to sell your bonds. And we've looked at history to guide us in that process. And if you look at chart number three, you'll see this is a chart that illustrates bond supply. And we like to issue bonds, I like to advise my clients to issue bonds when supply is low, because there's fewer bonds out there, and investors actually have to fight for those bonds, and that's what you want. You want your bonds to sell for a higher price to investors, because when they pay more, you pay less. Higher prices essentially translating to lower interest rates. And so we're watching these things, and therefore we've set our strategic calendar to issue the bonds in a January, February timeframe, to take advantage of that. And I anticipate, and we're already starting to see signs as of yesterday and today, of supply decreasing, interest rates going back down from how they've skyrocketed post-election. Moving on to the process, again, tonight is the first official act. It does not require you to issue bonds. It does not set forth an official timeframe or deadline in which you have to issue the bonds, but it is the first legal step. After this parameters resolution, we begin preparing for meetings with rating analysts. Those are analysts that will assess the city's credit. I'll speak more to that in just a moment. We have to give the analysts some time to do their number crunching and analysis, and it takes them a couple of weeks. But once they deliver us a final credit rating, and then publish that rating with a prospectus, send it out to the marketplace, and then take orders for your bonds. And so that process, essentially, if we squeeze it down to a tight timeframe, it takes about six weeks, but again, we have flexibility, and we're targeting that January, February timeframe, so that we can capture low rates for your residents. So our immediate action steps after the council considers this resolution is to prepare for these rating agency visits, which we will do in January. And we'll continue to monitor market conditions to make sure that, again, we issue the bonds at a favorable time. And I just wanted to speak to, on, if you flip over the handout, I just want to congratulate you as a city council, your management team, for the tremendous job you've done in the past with your bonds. You have issued general obligation bonds in the past. Those bonds were assessed back in 2014, and your credit rating was confirmed at a double A minus. And that's a tremendous rating. You're in a very select category when you're a double A rated entity. You figure that the country's rated triple A, the state of Utah's rated triple A, some school districts, et cetera. But to be a double A minus credit, that is very, very favorable and delivers low rates to your residents. So congratulations to you. A few things...
Thank you.
Well done.
Well, can I just clarify something there? These are our rec center bonds. And so we're given a rating when we borrow the money, but they do what's called surveillance, where they come in and they'll check up on the city, make sure things are good financially, and then they, in essence, reissue the rating. Is that how they do it?
That's exactly right. One of the hurdles that we will be facing, which is why we've gone back to the surveillance report from 2014, is to really strategize and let these analysts know, despite the fact that there will be additional debt issued by the city, we're still a strong rated entity. And... we're still a strong rated entity. And there should be no questions in their minds to, again, issue this double A minus, or better. The economy's been better since 2014, and the city's continued to prosper. And so that's our strategy going into this, these next meetings, that are very important. And it's something that we spend a lot of time analyzing and preparing for. And so that, in essence, is my 42, 5-minute. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Again, appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
I just have a couple of questions. We've heard different comments about when is it a good time to issue bonds? It looks to me like chart number three, if I'm reading this right. Does this represent for the five-year period, 2011 to 2016, I guess that's six, six years, the supply of bonds that were available in each of the months?
It does.
Is that what each of those lines are?
Yes.
So when it shows that in January, that appears to be the low point in bond availability, can you describe a little bit what that means as far as favorability to the city?
Sure, absolutely. The chart three speaks to the supply. And I always use the metaphor, and I apologize for it being oversimplistic, but if you had four Cafe Rios, I'm not sponsored by Cafe Rio--
Taco Migo.
Oh, okay. That's good, okay.
That's our local restaurant.
Oh, okay. If you had 10 of those in a city block, as a consumer, you could decide to go to any one of those. And those establishments would likely reduce their prices in order to get you in their doors. And whereas if there were one on the city block, they could charge you whatever they wanted, essentially, within reasonability parameters for that food. And so when we look at bond supply, we like those markets when there's one restaurant on, there's a low supply of bonds in the marketplace, because that means that investors pay you more. You're able to charge more for your bonds. And when you charge more, a price perspective, it's that price-yield inverse relationship that none of us really want to remember from economics, that translates into a lower interest rate. And so as we, and you're exactly right, Mayor, so as we look back the past six years, and again, there's other factors besides supply that affect borrowing rates, but supply is a major one. And that is why a January timeframe, January, February timeframe is favorable, because of that low supply. Other things we watch are what's happening macroeconomically, what's happening with the Fed, what are they doing, where are jobs coming in economically. Investors take in all this data, and then they submit bids on--
Is there a trend that's actually working right now? I mean, can you act, I mean, with what's happening in the nation right now?
By way of an investment strategy, or?
I'm just saying, is this a trend, I mean, that we can actually, the history of the nation, I mean, are the trends really going to hold? Like, are we actually able to have some educated guesses as to what's going to happen to the market at this point?
We can do our best. We can't, our crystal ball is not perfect. I wish it was. We can watch those leading indicators, bond supply, treasury rates, movement of the Fed, investor flow of dollars. And when we can align those factors and make the best decision we can with what we know at that time, that's what we strive to do. The market can move day to day. You could issue bonds, and the following week rates could be a tenth of a percent higher, or they could be a tenth percent lower, but we made the best decision we could at the time. I wish I did have that perfect crystal ball. We work hard at trying to do it, but I think, historically speaking, for the last six years, I've never regretted selling bonds in January, February. But again, a lot of our clients issue bonds throughout the year, and when you need dollars, you need dollars, and you just try to make that, those micro decisions then later in the year.
Well, it looks like, Matt, there are multiple troughs in the graph here.
There are.
Table three, July of this year was very low.
Was.
September has a number of low points in every year, it looks like. One thing that's interesting to me is it looks like, looking at this year's graph, we went from the highest point in October to the lowest point of the year in November, in terms of supply. Was that related to the presidential election, or?
It does play a role in that. That's a very, great you picked up on that.
It looked like that, wasn't it?
Yeah, we do have--
Right around November 8th.
Right, yeah. Throughout the country, there's this either push right before, which is probably why we saw the spike in October, let's get it done, let's do it before the election. And then as we approach that election, municipalities pull the reins on those projects. We generally do see a push towards the end of the year as well. Summertime, from a practicality standpoint, people take time off and don't necessarily want to talk to people like me and issue bonds at that time. So there is some seasonality with some anomalies as well throughout the year.
Sure. If I could ask a question, Matt, kind of a more philosophical one. One of the concerns I've heard from the public, and we heard it in our open session today, was what I would almost characterize as kind of a worry about the negative arbitrage of borrowing a bunch of money without, you know, with a million plus in the bank now, we borrow a bunch, we're paying interest on it, we're sitting in an account that's got a yield of something abysmal compared to the 3.1, 3.2 we're talking about. What is your advice regarding that? And does it change the analysis, knowing that we have impact fees in the seven figures available to spend while we do architectural work?
Sure. No, that's something that Scott and I have talked about. We've run some analysis on that. Some of that information, I think, has been shared. The question, when that comes up, is when you split a transaction into two pieces, say, issue a piece early in the year, issue another piece later in the year, you do have to pay essentially twice your costs of issuance, because each bond transaction, it's like buying a home, every transaction has its specific cost, specific to that bond. So there are some additional costs when you split it up. That's one factor. The arbitrage is another one, and that's a tough one to analyze.
Can you describe that? I'm lost. What is arbitrage?
Sure. So essentially, when, if we were to issue the full amount, say, in January, and put nine and a half million in your construction account, you would only spend X amount, you know, for the first six months, and then another amount in the latter end of the year. And so you've essentially borrowed and paid, you know, three, you know, whatever, three and a half, whatever the interest rate ends up being. You've paid that amount on the entire corpus of that construction deposit. And those monies are only earning probably what's the public treasurer's investment fund is earning, which is just right below 1% right now. And so that differential between the 3, 3 and a half, and the 1%, and 2 and a half percent is what we call negative arbitrage, or negative carry. And that's a factor. However, the one counter to that that I can't control is where do interest rates go? January may be the low point in the year, in which case that negative arbitrage can be canceled out if rates do go up towards the end of the year. And that's something that we just don't know. And we just try to make our most educated decisions at the time. But certainly, that is still, I think, in the discussions and something that we--
So you're weighing--
Oh, sir.
You're weighing the risk, good or bad, that issuing the bonds in the month of January versus at some other time in the year, that the interest rate's going to change?
Right.
And if the interest rate goes up, then of course you've moved in the wrong direction. You've borrowed money at a higher rate, and you live with that higher rate for the entire term of the bond.
Isn't it 10 years?
All 20 years.
No, 10 years, and then we can refinance. Is that correct?
We can refinance.
If it's smart to do that at that time, yeah.
If it makes sense to.
Probably 97% of bonds issued in the state of Utah are refunded at or by that 10-year mark.
So then, so you live with that higher rate for that period of time, versus locking in a rate that you know exists now, and paying the extra interest between now and when you might have borrowed that money otherwise, so for eight months?
That's--
Is that close to?
You're right on track, Mayor. It's that decision, do we issue now at a point in time where we know where rates are, you know, where they go in the future, we don't know. If, say, you issued half in January and half towards the latter end of the year, the piece you issue in January may be quite a bit less expensive than what you would later in the year. But it's something that we can analyze, and continue to analyze, and try to quantify, and do some sensitivity analysis.
See, I like the question, because maybe for the first time with this chart, it helps me understand that if we borrow now versus borrowing later in the year, then we're going to pay interest between now and that time that we wouldn't normally accrue.
Right. And it seems like--
But we would lock in that interest rate for however long we hold the bond. Whereas if the interest rate changes, good or bad, right, it's a risk, and we pick it up, and it happens to be at the higher rate, then we lock in that rate from that point for the rest of the term of that bond. So it's not just the point between January and X, it's whenever it's borrowed through the entire term of the loan. And that's a formula that we can actually do some experimenting with and find out what the numbers are.
Right. Seems like we could crunch out a very objective number of, if the interest rate went up 2%, then the interest that we paid earlier would be, or, you know, we'd figure out whatever X is. We can figure out an exact number. This is what the interest rate would have to increase to make it a bad deal to have waited. And in my view, the thing that we have in our dynamic is we have the money to do a lot of our work without having to issue the bonds immediately. And so if we issue them in January of 2018, and rates were lower, or they were the same, or they were only modestly higher, we could be significantly financially better off as a city. And so there's the argument to be made that we need to do that calculation, figure out what the X is, what this amount has to increase. And so Jermaine--
Have to be theoretical. We can actually look at a sheet, and then could say, here's where you are now. If it rises this much, here's where you would be. Here's the financial difference over the life of your loan.
Right.
Well, just in the last month, with one interest point, wasn't it 2.2 just a month ago?
The 10-year treasury, or?
The bond, the bond interest rate. Wasn't that 2.2?
No, it doesn't cut the time off. No. The only thing, if we save it--
I don't know. He would know that better than me.
I think when we ran it pre-election, we were, I think, right at about 3.2% or 3.1%. I'd have to go back. I apologize. And I think today, we ran it, we're probably around 3.4.
But isn't just one interest point over the life of the loan, I'm thinking 500,000, something like that?
Well, rather than speculate, you can actually ask for amortization, if you will, or some kind of a sheet that says, here's what it would be.
Absolutely. And I can work with Scott and Denise on that. We serve a lot of school districts, and you can imagine the breadth of their elections in the hundreds of millions of dollars. This is something that we do deal with a lot. Do they build a high school now and a middle school, or do they just do the high school? And so it is something that we're--
Can I ask the question maybe a different way, because I think I might be a little confused? When we borrow money, whether we borrow it in January, or let's say, September, and the interest rate is exactly the same, aren't we paying the same amount of interest? Because we're paying over 20 years, regardless of whether we had the money sit in the bank or not?
Right, so--
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Good point, Scott. Yeah, so your start date and your end date, it's essentially a 20-year increment, whether you issue it in January, 20 years from January, 20 years from September. That's if you issued the whole full bond at that time.
No, I'm saying we do 9.5, no, I'm saying we do 9.5 in January, or we do 9.5 in September. No matter what time we do this, we're going to sell the bonds, and we're going to have a locked-in interest rate over 20 years.
That's exactly--
So whether we spend--
As long as the rate doesn't change.
Well--
Between now and the time we borrow it.
Yeah, I'm saying if interest rates stay the same. So if we borrow in January, whether we spend the money or not, doesn't change how much interest we're going to pay over the 20 years, does it?
The, sorry, my mind goes a million different ways. The more you know, the less you know. And so from the perspective of, we've issued bonds in January, nine and a half million for 20 years. Interest rates don't change, we issue in September for 20 years. The total interest and principal paid by the city would be identical. All other factors stay the same.
So to me, that doesn't necessarily matter. That's why I'm asking the question, in my mind, whether we, if we're going to do all 9.5, whether we do it in January or September, that doesn't change?
If the interest rate stays the same.
The interest rate, so there's not a risk. We're not paying additional interest if we borrow in January, but we don't start spending the money till September. I don't think we're, there's no additional interest that we're paying, because we settle on those terms whenever we sell the bonds.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah, the arbitrage more comes into play if you were to split.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm referring to us just selling all the 9.5 at one time. And I don't know if that's what Ben was asking. Were you talking about two different issuances?
No, I think this is a good discussion, because, yeah, I envision it as, but I don't see it necessarily, because I think you make a good point, Scott. We're shifting the interest in time, but we're still seeing a 20-year, a little bit later start date, a little bit later end date. I think the bigger question may be if we can get additional information on value engineering, different work done by our architects in the time period that we're spending out of our existing reserves. And so we can have a better sense of the exact dollar we need to draw down on our bonds and do a single transaction, because there is about a $35,000 transactional cost.
And that's a different discussion for us. That's just a policy question, saying, are we okay to waive and kind of risk a little bit on the interest rates and wait till September to borrow the money, and we spend our million dollars that we have leading up to that? Or do we just borrow the money in January or February, whatever, and thinking that if that's going to be our best interest rate, that's probably the best time to borrow. I don't think it's cost us any extra additional money. Again, we're just rolling the dice on interest rates at that point.
I think that's an excellent point and a good discussion to have. Thank you.
We're happy, whatever analysis you'd like us to run.
So Matt and I and Denise will put that into a document that I think will make more sense than us kind of spitballing right now, and get it back to you.
Thank you. All right. Other questions for Matt?
A question for Scott, more than Matt, but in the majority, I like the terms of the parameters resolution. I want to know if this is the last official act. If we were to pass this resolution, would there be another act by this elected body to pull the trigger and say, now do it? Or, I know this authorizes, but could we, could we say we would like to have this body debate and weigh in on the exact decision to sell the bonds?
So I'll answer a little bit, and I'll let Matt. I think the answer is yes, we can do it that way. That's the way they used to do it. What Matt has said is that sometimes, if we have to go back for official council action, we could miss a window to sell bonds at a particular time. So what cities do now is they get the authorization and the parameters, the city council sets the parameters, and then they turn it over to the mayor, city administrator, working together, saying, okay, here's the day we're going to sell them, with our financial advisors. But then the mayor can authorize and pull the trigger so we can take advantage of the best rate. But we can do it, my understanding is we can still do it the other way. Is that right?
We can. And the council always has, even if you were to pass this resolution, the council can always come back and readdress things with regard to bonding.
Right. And as long as we notice the meeting, and then we have an official time.
Right.
I believe we just went through this. And I can't remember if it was the previous issuance to this one, or one before that, where we were going to sell the bonds on, I think it was a Tuesday, and we were called by the bond council and said, today is not the right day, let's wait till tomorrow. And the interest rates went down in that one day. I'm saying there was a reason where it played to the advantage to--
To have the flexibility.
It is nice to have that flexibility.
And again, that's a policy decision for the governing body.
Yeah, but certainly, if you wanted to bring it back to the council, absolutely.
Other questions? Any further discussion? Okay, what's the right thing here? Just motion? Yes.
It's a motion with a voice vote, yeah.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion that we adopt resolution 2016-050 of the City Council Pleasant Grove, authorizing the issuance and sale by the City of not more than $9.5 million aggregate principal amount of its general obligation bond series 2017.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Lynn. And I am, oh, there it is, okay. I was just looking for the actual resolution. All right, by voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Okay, item D is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-051, authorizing the mayor to declare five Dell OptiPlex 780 desktops and three HP Pro 3130 MT desktop surplus and direct they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of property surplus and providing for an effective date. Says here Sherry.
Hi, Sherry. They're just old computers that we replaced.
Okay. Any questions for Sherry?
I mean-
You got new ones, right?
Newer.
New.
120,000 miles.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other discussion, then I'll, I'll call for a motion.
Mayor, council, make the motion that we adopt Resolution 2016-051, authorizing the mayor to declare five Dell OptiPlex 780 desktops and three HP Pro 3130 MT desktops as surplus and directing that they be disposed of according to the city's policy for disposing of surplus property and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Eric, by voice, Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item 10E is to consider for adoption in ordinance 2016-31, setting the time and place of the regular meetings of the city council boards, commissions, and committee meetings for the year 2017.
Yeah, this is our standard requirement to make notice of all our meetings for the upcoming year. We've stayed with the same schedule that we've had in the past with our planning commission, our city council, with the first and third Tuesdays being a, a regular city council session, our second Tuesday being a work session, and then not having a meeting on the fourth Tuesday. And then also reserving the fifth, if we have a fifth Tuesday, to have a joint meeting with the planning commission.
Scott emailed you though about possibly doing one meeting a month and then going like every other month.
I agree.
I just want to see if anyone was awake.
Yeah, let's make a motion. You got my vote.
One meeting a month?
Long meeting. Start at 8:00 AM and go all night.
I just want to see if you guys were waiting. Ken looked up too, though.
We could meet once a quarter.
For eight hours.
Yeah, one meeting, but like marathon meeting.
No, it wouldn't.
I'll make the motion.
We are, we are going to focus a little better for the planning commission though, right? On those, because that was a waste of time for them that I-
Our, our meeting last week, and this is the danger we run into sometimes with these joint meetings, is we, as a city council, have business that we just need to take care of, particularly getting to the end of the year. And having a fifth Tuesday in November didn't work out so hot in that, in that scheme. So I think it's something we can monitor. We, we talked about this a year ago, to make those meetings a little more efficient as far as making sure that the planning commission has, we have some things that are specifically related to them. We didn't do a very good job of that last week, but we can renew that focus and-
I think for the most part, though, when they came during the year, it was, we got their input and feedback.
Yeah, last, last week wasn't super great on that, but I think you're right. We did have a little better focus, because what we do is we ask them, what are some things that you would like to discuss with the city council? We get some input from them. And then with us getting into general plan and things like that, we, we, we have some things that we need to all be in the room for.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2016-31, setting the time, place, setting the time and place of the regular meeting of the city council boards, commissions, and committee meetings for the year 2017.
Second.
Motion by Sid, second by Ben, by voice Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Nothing for 11. 12, review and discussion of the December 13th city council meeting. This one's, is this, this one's tonight, right? The redevelopment agency?
Yes.
All right, so the 13th.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'll just hit the agenda real quick and get through the items. So it will be a, a city council meeting, not a work session. We do need to take some action. However, we will have a few presentations. We'll have introduction of Josh Walker, who's the new Pleasant Grove Linden Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. Some of you already know Josh, but we'll have him come in and introduce himself.
Can we have him sing for us while he's here?
You know, that'd be awesome.
A Christmas carol or something.
If you watched Sunday night, you were able to see Josh out there singing. So we've been approached by the executive director of Utopia, a guy by the name of Roger Timmerman. He would like to make a presentation to the city council on bringing Utopia to Pleasant Grove. We all recognize Utopia brand name is not a, something that people want to jump at. But they, they have a business model that is different than what they've been doing with their, some of their pledged cities, where, you know, they have a fiber backbone that runs really all the way down I-15. They said they get numerous calls from our residents asking for the service. They say that Linden has the highest take rate of Utopia out of any of their cities. And there's a kind of a mathematical formula that says, if you get so many people that will sign up, it's worth your while as a city financially. He needs, he'll go over all that. He'll talk about the ups and downs of Utopia. He'll talk about the financial mechanism to make this happen, what the risks are for the city, and all that. So he, he emailed, I believe all of you at one point, and asked to do this. So I sat down and met with him, and, and really, this is a educational process that he just wants to make sure that the city council, the residents of Pleasant Grove have an opportunity to see what they can or can't do. So he'll come and present to us next week and do that. Candace Thacker with the Greenhouse, which is the building just kind of over by the car wash, I have my directions correct, just over here. They provide a service to our communities and mental health services. They would like to come and do a quick presentation to the city council.
Scott, well-
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd pass. No, with the, with the Utopia, can you, as staff, maybe call some of these other cities, city managers, and find out how it's working for them at this point? And if they change over to the model? I mean, I don't know if we present it in the meeting on Tuesday, but I would like to see from, not from the perspective of, the perspective of the owner, but from, from the perspective of the other cities.
I think the best would be to hear from him first.
He's out playing.
And then if the council says we have any sort of inkling, we want to follow up on this, then we can do that. Because from the little bit that I talked with them, for the Orem's of the world, the Lindens, and those that signed on right away, the business model is different for them than it is for the new businesses.
We do, we do have one owner's rep in the room, that's an Orem resident, maybe, does he have it?
Me?
Yeah.
I do.
Okay.
Paid for it.
Yes, you did.
Well, there's no paying for it. That, that's what I was going to say.
I want all the hundred bags up and down, do whatever you want with internet, it's, it's great to have the speed, so.
But that, that's just that I don't, there, there's a difficult brand name, they recognize that. It's a business model, and all he's going to do is go over the business model, and if the city council says, doesn't work for us, they're on their way. If it's something where you say, we might want to chase this a little bit, let's do a little more research, then you'll have that opportunity. So I don't, I don't want us to get too much into the weeds on it yet. He needs an opportunity to present it to you.
I don't know, maybe if they changed him to Funtopia, it'd be a little bit different.
Funtopia?
Funtopia.
Oh, Funtopia. I, I, we had the conversation, I said, your brand name is not very good. I don't know, why don't you change it? They haven't, but here we are.
How about privately held company that funds itself?
Yes. We like that, too.
I really like that. Sounds like a pretty brand.
So Ken, I don't know if you want to briefly go over the two lot final plat for Walker Ridge, if there's anything you need to discuss on that?
Okay, yeah, well, I don't know, I'm going to let Marty. So Walker Ridge.
Whoa, whoa.
Maybe this is the area where-
Hundred bag, right there.
So Walker Ridge, plat A, we purchased three lots in there in anticipation of a future pressurization water tank being constructed. Right now, we're looking at approximately 1.1, let me remember, 1.5 million gallons is what we're looking at trying to get on the site. And looking at potentially going up to 2 million gallons of, of storage there. And I think we were able to work that into our site plan. So we're, what, what this is, is the first steps we have is we have three separate lots. And in order to construct the tank, we have to combine two of the lots together, take a little bit of the third lot, and then create a final two lot plat. And so that's what this plat is. We're going to planning commission on, on Thursday to discuss this in the public hearing, and interested to kind of hear what just, what's going to happen with the neighborhood. We've had a big poster board sitting up on that site for the last two or three years to let anybody know that's buying in that cul-de-sac, that hey, there's a potential for a, a water tank that's going to be sitting here, this, and we've got a conceptual view and artistic rendering of what that would look like there. We're keeping with that same kind of look for that facility. But, so you might hear a little bit about that. When we, we want to start construction of this probably in March. We're in the middle of design right now. Should have plans available by, I would guess, the end of January is our current deadline, bid it in February, start construction in March, be built by July 1, and start operating this year, which is going to be a huge benefit to our PI system up in that area. So that's kind of the plan, just so you, but this is the first step, is getting the plat recorded, so that we can actually build it, not across lot lines.
Any questions? Okay. Last item?
Well, we have our fine, our audit report and our CAFRA report, which our auditors will be here to go over that, and then we have a resolution to adopt that once you have an opportunity to hear the report. And then our last item for discussion is the property on 220 South, that the, a potential developer came in and met with the city council about a month ago. There's a road that would need to be removed. They are asking for some housing to go in there, as far as a little bit of density, as, as far as that's concerned. We as staff, as we've looked at it, feel like we need to have, make sure we have some straight communication between staff and you, as to all the ramifications of if the road goes away or stays, if we do the housing there, what it also means if we have some other properties that we wish would be part of this project, that could potentially have some retail impact. We need to kind of talk through all that, in essence, without the developer there, so that we're communicating, because they want to proceed, but we just want to make sure you understand all the things that are wrapped into this.
How much road could we end up vacating there?
How much road?
Yeah. Marty? One eighth of a-
It's probably 600 or 700 feet, 70 feet wide type lengths that we're looking at there.
Yeah, and, and if you remember, he came, he presented all that. Again, as they're getting further down the road, we need to circle back, I think, as staff and council, and have a discussion. So we'll, we'll talk about that next week.
Anything else for next week?
We might, we'll probably have a, actually an RDA item. I haven't told Kathy, we have our inter-local agreement drafted between Pleasant Grove City and the RDA for the Grove Tower. We've done a MOU that kind of outlines that, the inter-local agreement is the official document. We'd like to do that before the end of the year, so.
And next week, the school district is meeting on?
School district's meeting on the school district participation in the Grove Tower. I'm trying to confirm with the county that they're meeting as well on that. So I've been trying to get ahold of Commissioner Ellerton and just haven't heard back yet, so that's the plan.
I, I will not be here, so you're going to conduct that meeting next week? Okay? All right. Neighborhood and staff business, Libby, anything? Okay. Ken?
Nothing.
Dave?
Yeah, either way. So this Thursday is the Chamber of Commerce Christmas party, joint with American Fork Chamber of Commerce. And I think that it would be a great opportunity, not only to just have a fun time on the chamber, but to interact with the businesses and see exactly what momentum has been generated with the decision that was made just, you know, a month or so ago. Josh has already stepped in and, and made a big difference. So in the past, when we've had all three chambers with, with Lehigh combined for events, we've been anywhere between about 85 to 100. And we're already going to be approaching 80 that have RSVP'd for this event, and it's just joint with two chambers. And so I think you'll be able to get a great feel for, for the momentum in the chamber and what's taking place there, if you're able to. So if you haven't already RSVP'd for that and you're interested, let me know and I can get you in contact with, with Josh and make sure you have the details there, this Thursday lunchtime.
At Stone Gate?
Yes.
At noon?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Dion?
Nothing.
Marty?
Just talking about potholes, we're seeing quite a few things pop up literally in this time of the year. That's what happens, the freeze thaw cycle and those things get out of the ground with some of the road condition. Just be aware that anything that we do at this time of year is temporary, and so it's, it shouldn't be assumed to be a final fix, even if it looks terrible when we get done with it. It really is a temporary patch, and it's something that would need to come back with a more of a permanent patch and fix in the spring for whatever we do. So we can go out and we, we do appreciate when we get those notifications, because those things can pop up on one day, and we don't see it, we don't drive the roads, we don't know. So please continue to notify us of those things, so we can get out and fill those with the temporary mix. But just be aware that if you get complaints that it looks terrible, it's ravelling, it's coming out of the hole, it's, it's winter and that's what happens, so.
And the batch plants are closed until?
Generally till the first part of April, I think is really when they start to fire back up.
So should we continue to refer people to you then?
Please do, just have them call Public Works and file a report. Just, we'll put it in our work order system and send somebody out to, to go and fill it as soon as we can, so.
Great.
And then the projects, you know, we had a great season, we had a lot going on, got through a lot of stuff. At some point here, I'd like to take a few minutes and just kind of show you some of the projects that we did, and what they looked like before, and what they look like now, and hopefully, hopefully you'll see what the money that we spent, which has been a lot of money, but it's went to really good things, and we've got a lot done, so.
Is that something you could incorporate into your presentation when we have our off-site discussion?
Absolutely.
I know we're going to have a healthy discussion on roads. I think it'd be really good, I would be interested in seeing that in relationship to where we're headed.
Yeah, I would like, as we start talking about roads, we've had two years now really of funding, and I'm planning, as we start looking forward into the next three years of road planning, that we're planning to do. The one thing is, is that we kind of went through this, are we going to have additional funding or not available to us? And so we didn't move forward on getting that third year plan this last year. What I would like to do is come and make some presentations with regards to the next three years, based on the current funding, that we anticipate without any additional road fee or anything of that nature. And, and then also kind of give you a summary of the roads, projects that we got done over the last two years of funding, and where they ended up, and, and kind of that big summary. Yeah, that's what I was hoping to do when we get, go to our retreat.
And, and then will that also cover the fix that they made to the gas tax thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Marty?
Yeah, thanks for all the roadwork that was done this year. There was some good projects done and we're making progress, so thank you.
Sorry, I was...
No, you're fine, just thank you for the roadwork done. We're making progress, moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
Dave? Nothing? Is it Mike back there? Yeah, nothing? Sherry?
Mrs. Santa Claus is at the library tonight. We missed her. But we had about 200 people who didn't miss her. Oh, good. And we are selling the mugs that we gave you as gifts last Christmas. So if anybody wants to buy a pair, a match one, we, we're selling them as a fundraiser for the library. So they're $8.
Great.
Okay, we have an order for three already. You're in for one, okay.
If I bring mine out, everybody goes crazy.
Really? Well, good. And anybody else, they're, they're in the library. So that's it, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Denise?
Audit's done.
Yay!
You'll learn about that.
I guess when you say you're bringing the CAFRA, that's, you know, audit's done, right?
Yeah.
Any big issues though, that's a question.
And the auditors will present. We did have some findings, and so they will share that with us, so, which I think is to be expected with us having a new auditor. I think the last auditor told us he'd been here for 18 years, I think he said. So, I mean, I think it was a good change, but there were some things, but I just think they'll help move us forward, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Scott?
Just a reminder, no meetings the 20th or 27th of December.
Can you say that a little louder?
No meeting the 20th and 27th of December.
Thank you.
You're welcome, that's it.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Kathy? I think so. Thank you. Diana? Lynn? Eric? Ben?
I got a certificate here that's got a spot for the city administrator to sign it and there's no signature.
Oh shoot, did I forget to sign them?
So we want the signature.
Right, bring them over.
I, I do want to tell you, and we didn't, I didn't mention this earlier, but the, the credit for this event and how great it was is to, is to Scott and Denise for putting it together. It really was remarkable and a lot of fun. And everybody that attended told me we had a great time. And when it was mentioned in our neighborhood advisory board meeting,